Thank you all for your patience. Thank you all. It is 7:06. Madam Secretary, when you're ready, just let me know.
I'm ready.
All right, 7:06 PM, and all council members are present for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Workshop. We will start off with citizen comments. Residents have four minutes with the council having one minute allotted to speak or to address or share your concerns or opinion. We will start off with Melissa Brown. Good evening. You have four minutes.
I'm just going to start at the top and work my way down. As far as the drainage master plans is something that we need, as long as we are going to adhere to it. So I have seen countless plans come in front of the council. We pay close to half a million dollars for each one of them, and then they don't get followed. We need to start adhering to these plans that we're paying so much money for. Also, I would hope that this would be part of the updated project plan for future water and wastewater projects, if that could be tied in, so that we can get that adjusted and adjust the information in our impact fees in order to facilitate future growth for WCID number one. As far as increasing the amount of money to KEDC, so let's look at, in the past year, they've added fewer than 50 jobs. Sales tax is now stagnant year over year. There's no new manufacturing that local residents can do. There is no distribution. There is no logistics. They sold property in the industrial park to the school district, so that takes that off of tax rules. Even the money, even though that money isn't coming directly into the city coffers, that's still money that would have gone into the tures that the city uses for projects. If this money increase is needed to meet incentives, as noted in the presentation, then does that mean that KEDC has already overextended? And if so, on what? Because from the citizens' perspective, we're not seeing the benefits of the money that we're putting into it. Even with a quarterly update on where that money is going, once we get that update, that money is already spent, and there is nothing that can be done about it. Once an agreement is signed to, and that contract is signed, bless you, there is absolutely nothing that can be done to change it. There is a reason why several years ago, the council cut back the amount of funding we were putting into KEDC, and I think actually they were being more productive with less money. It was causing them to have to be smarter with it. There are three boards coming up tonight for appointments. I noticed that the Clean Housing Authority Board is not on there. I know that it is the mayor's appointment, but historically, I know our prior mayor at least brought it in front of the council so that the public could help celebrate, and the council could at least recognize who those appointees were to the board. And then finally, on OR 24002, amending the authorized civil service positions, how much salary lag is available? The way I'm looking at it, why not use the salary lag to expand the force instead of just restructure the force? Authorize an additional four sergeant positions without reclassifying, bringing the total to 226 authorized police officers. This allows us to maintain those other four officers on the road, so that they can be patrolling the city, so they can be at city council meetings, so they can be doing whatever it is the police department needs to be doing. And clearly, we can afford it, since the FY24 fiscal impact is just slightly over the property taxes that the city council just gave up and said, "We don't need anyway." Have a good night.
Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Pardon me. Going down the list, item number two, with the DPS agreement for failure to appear, that is an excellent use of resources that we're already paying taxes to. That just interlocal agreement, that's a couple of keystrokes, and that is addressing a problem. That should be an example of how we should be doing things around here. Mr. Kent, congratulate you on seceding from killing. With regard to item number six, with the household hazardous waste, may I recommend that typically Army installations have a very good program with that. Maybe just ask them what they do with theirs, as far as collecting or even having a maintenance facility to hold it, and maybe for those who are a little tight on the wallets, where they can go get discounted or maybe even free household cleaning supplies and things like that. That's how the Army runs it. It just seems to be a good idea. Take that as you will. With regard to the Crime Solutions Committee, I'm going to take a moment here, and a little bit of pride of authorship. When I proposed this committee, it was supposed to be the Crime Prevention Committee, and with the direction that it's going and the members going to it, here we are two years on, and in no way has this committee conformed or resembled anything to the idea that I proposed. We all know how it got that way. We know who got it that way. So it's an example of citizen input just completely taken in a completely different direction. Wrong application of a right idea. The committee, I would recommend, go back to at least the original suggestion that I made, have the chief of police, from what I've seen, KPD is very well represented at these meetings, but KPD, KISD, and code enforcement, and make it a central place where all the reports and aggregates just come together, say, "Hey, this is what's going on in our neighborhood," and kick back and forth. Here's what we're doing. Here's what's working. Here's what's not doing. That would be an AAR for any of the veterans. With regards to marijuana ordinance and lawsuits, it's on the agenda, and once again, we're the usual suspects who got us in this jam. I do not see Julie Oliver or anybody from Ground Game Texas or any of the usual supporters. Why don't you just admit defeat? The circuit court and the attorney general are just going to steamroll you. We've already wasted enough money. I've said it time again. If the law changes, it's going to change. I won't agree if the state law changes, but there is a way to change the law, and I and everybody else will have to go along with it. Just follow basic civics. Follow your oaths. I realize that this is an election season. A lot of you have campaign promises and everything else that you've made in the past with regard to this ordinance, but it has caused nothing but problems, nothing but confusion, and it has not solved anything. From the view from the street, from my front porch, I'm not seeing our little adjustment that is illegal and unauthorized and ill-advised. I'm not seeing any effect. And I dare say that you ask cop on the street off the record, they'll tell you the same thing, that the crimes still exist. They've just morphed into different classifications. That's all. There's a 26-year study that was released not long ago with regard to marijuana. If you just Google or use whatever search engine, you look up 26-year marijuana study, that might shed some light on the differences of some of the older proponents of marijuana. The strength of the marijuana that's on the streets now is not what they were smoking at Woodstock. So just something to take into consideration. The conditions of the experiment have changed, but the law is to change. Again, there's a way to do it. This isn't it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Fornina. Cameron Cochran, you have four minutes, and good evening.
Can I just make a note that this is a fire hazard? This shouldn't be here. This is blocking the accessway in case there's an emergency.
Just sharing that. I'd like to discuss 24056, Agreement to Increase the Colleen Economic Development Corporation Funding. Strange, this nonprofit, I looked on the IRS tax records, they only add up to 2020. They have 2.3 million in the bank already. So that's according to the IRS tax records. I'm not sure why we're giving extra money to someone who has 2.3 million in the bank. Then I looked at the actual webpage. The actual webpage has a nice mission statement that says, "The mission of the Colleen Economic Development Corporation is, quote, 'to promote the development of commercial, industrial, and manufacturing enterprises to promote and encourage employment and the public welfare.'" So I was curious, well, who's promoting that? So I looked at the board. The board is comprised of city council members, these people that are about to give themselves some more money, banker institutions, the Colleen Chamber of Commerce, and others. So then I was curious, well, do these people receive money for being on this board? That webpage was kind of vague. It did not have it there. It did have a place where you can do an open record request. I submitted one about three weeks ago. Still haven't heard back. So I guess the city, once again, is trying to give themselves some money, or at least this Colleen Economic Development Corporation, more money, even though, again, they have money in the bank already, and there are board members on this committee here that help out that situation. Let's see what else. Let's review this Colleen Economic Development Corporation again. I looked at their webpage. Their webpage really doesn't have any accomplishments. It said that they're in negotiations since 2002 with the semiconductor company with Tesla, BMW, and Samsung. I haven't seen those companies walking around here. I guess this development isn't really developing anything. Let's see what else we have. Oh, wait, I did find something. I mean, it was called incentive to the MGC Pure Chemical Company. I also remember the city of Colleen giving the same company some money. Seems like the city likes to give taxpayer money freely. Also, within this area, supposedly Raytheon, I didn't see that building online. The Pepsi vending and distribution, it's there, but why is the city giving them a Pepsi company money? I'm not sure. Let's see. Yeah, I have two last questions. On this Colleen Economic Development Corporation, who's supposed to help develop commercial businesses, are they also giving money to the downtown area to support the downtown? Can someone answer that question? Also, it's just very strange that the webpage is very vague, and they don't respond to answers or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Price. Good evening. You have four minutes.
Could you read the number that I put on that form for me? I can't remember which one that actually was on my.
It would be my pleasure, Mr. Price.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
So you have two, public hearing. It's not one. You have RS-24-052, RS-24-053, RS-050, and then you put 53 again. And you also have PH24-007.
Right. I just want to make sure that was on the DS and not something else, because there was three meetings tonight, so I'm a little discombobulated. I apologize.
That is fine. Take your time.
Okay. Yeah, so when I got through.
If you get off, I'll get you back on, Mr. Price.
Yeah, so I can talk on the PH24007, right? So my question about.
It's not on the agenda.
So we're on the RS 053. I was just wondering what the, the actual benefits. I think we spoke on that.
Mr. Price, she's going to get, it's a 054. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yeah, so on DS 24021, that was, I was wondering what the actual cost was.
I think you're still on the council meeting that's already closed.
We on the workshop, Mr. Price. It's the workshop.
That's what I did, right? Yeah, I got them all confused. So, but I've got RS, you said the 50? 2405?
No, sir. You can try, please, we will not be having individuals yelling from the audience when he has the floor. Please respect him. Mr. Price.
Yeah.
Would you hold the clock for Mr. Price, please? And can we give him the correct, if you won't mind, she's going to help you out, Mr. Price.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
He waited about one minute to get ready. I would be okay with adding a minute to his stuff.
Yes, sir. I'm okay with that.
Okay, that's why I'm at a loss. I'm at a loss. It's not a problem. I, you know, so.
That's okay. Madam, Mr. Price, stand by. Madam Secretary, we're going to add a minute to Mr. Price.
Thank you. I didn't get the chance to go over the, these right here. I thought they were part of the other sheet that I went to, so I apologize for my confusion.
There was a lot, three agendas, so I can understand the confusion.
Yeah, it, you know, so.
No problem. Take your time.
Out of all of these that are on here, right, if you look at all of them that have a dollar value, right, my main concern is, is that if it's adding to our current budget, right, of debt, right, what is our current budget of debt, and how does this affect that debt? That's my main thing here that I'm looking at, right? So I think we're $340 million in debt as a city? Or have I got that wrong, or is it, my number's wrong?
You're wrong.
So what is it?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
You don't have any idea what that might be? Okay, so I was looking at 340 million. So maybe my numbers are incorrect, but that's my calculations. This is our total required debt that I can see that we have expended ourselves to is 340 million in debt. So that's just from the last couple of months, adding everything up. So when I take this and I look at it, I'm like, how much is this adding to our debt as a city? Because to me, I keep saying, with this proposal on the bond that I think that's in here, of $105 million to add to our debt, right, as a city, to raise our taxes on our property 4.55%, is what I'm questioning, because that's going to raise my cost of living. And a lot of us, a lot of people like me, that live on just $20,000 a year on pension, retirement from the Army, right, that we're not an officer, right, that we're enlisted. It's getting harder for us. So that's why I'm saying, look at the total amount of money that we're spending as a city, and then try to address that in our tax dollar debt. How are we reducing our taxes, right, as a city? And it's not just us. It's KISD too. So, I mean, by no means am I just blaming us here at the city council. That's my question is, how is this affecting our overall debt? All the money that's being planned to spend in here? So that's my basic question, one. Just trying to consolidate, Mayor. Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate your time for my confusion.
No, sir. Thank you. No problem. Anytime. All right, Mr. Leo Gukhaisen. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Temp, council members, city manager, and residents. I'm here today to discuss RQ 24004. First, I'd like to say that transparency is a two-way street, not just a one-way street. With that being said, I feel the residents have the right to know from their elected officials about what is happening with this matter. Also, residents have the right to know where their elected officials stand in regards to this matter. Residents have the right to know how their tax money is being spent and/or used. Residents need to hear from their elected officials regarding the situation and not have to read about it in the local newspaper. And finally, I feel that this matter is in the best interest of the residents and should be addressed in a public forum and not behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gukhaisen. Any comments? If not, I'd just like to make one comment. The members on KEDC, the council members and the board members, we do not get paid. We're just there to serve as the boards for this entire council. And also, KEDC has done a lot of great things, and he just gave his report. We need Colleen Economic Development to continue to do their job, and that's within the job. So the money that we do invest in KEDC is worth it. Just go out to our industrial park and just drive around. Thank you. Madam Secretary, discuss items for regular city council meeting on March 26, 2024.
Minutes, MN 24007, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of February 27, 2024. Resolutions, RS 24054, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with Department of Public Safety for failure to appear program.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Judge Krishna, good evening, sir.
Excuse me. Good evening, city council members, Madam Mayor, city manager, the attorney. I'm glad to be here this evening. Excuse me, my voice is acting up. I'll do my best, though. So I'm here to discuss a proposal for an amended interlocal agreement with DPS, Department of Public Safety, for the failure to appear program. Excuse me. So I'll give you an overview. We'll cover.
We're going to get you some water, Judge.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Alvarez, he provided that.
Okay, once again, excuse me. So I'll talk about the background of the DPS interlocal agreement for failure to appear, and how it's in conformity with the city policy, the financial impact to the city, some alternatives, a recommendation, and I'll ask if there are any questions. So we'll talk about the interlocal agreement. So this is the failure to appear program that allows the Department of Public Safety, DPS, to contract with the city to provide information necessary for the department to deny removal of the driver's license of a person who fails to appear for a complaint or citation, or fails to pay or satisfy a judgment of the court. Now, DPS contracts with a third-party vendor to oversee the automated system. Now, the contract does require an inter, excuse me, interlocal agreement in compliance with Chapter 791 of the Government Code and the Texas Transportation Code 706.008. Ah, excuse me. The contract is subject to the ability of the parties to pay the third-party vendor the services required under the contract. Now, an interlocal agreement with DPS is already in place. The agreement was originally signed back in 2004, and then amended in 2012 in compliance with changes implemented with the 82nd legislative session. Once again, it was amended in 2020, with changes implemented in the 88th legislative session, and we just had another legislative session, the 90th session, where DPS revised the failure to appear interlocal cooperation contract or the interlocal agreement to confirm with legislative mandates from the 90th legislative session. The first change is to the language and restructuring of the original ICC to provide clarity regarding responsibilities held by each party. Also, it included an indigency into the program as mandated by the House Bill 291. Now, the language to account for future changes to the current statute, ensuring ICC remains in compliance with the latest legal requirements until a revised ICC is available. So we're still current now. But these changes do require a new contract to be entered into by the city and DPS. Now, the interlocal agreement that we want to amend does conform to the city policy and government code, Chapter 791, and the Texas Transportation Code 706.008. Now, what is the financial impact? There will be no expenditures of city funds for this program. However, $10 is assessed on every case that is reported to the DPS as delinquent. The defendant is required to remit payment of the $10 fee prior to releasing the hold on their driver's license, and $4 of the fee is retained by the city. What are the alternatives in this matter? First, do not enter an interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety, or to enter an interlocal agreement with Department of Public Safety. Now, what is our recommendation? The staff recommends entering into an interlocal agreement with DPS to deny renewal of the driver's license of a person who fails to appear for a complaint or citation, or fails to pay or satisfy a judgment ordering payment. This is an effective tool used by municipal courts to gain compliance from defense, who would otherwise ignore a complaint, citation, or order of the court. Now, our municipal court clears approximately 7,300 cases each year as a result of utilizing this program. So I covered the interlocal agreement of failure to appear. I showed that it's in conformity with the city policy and other laws. There's no financial impact to the city, and I gave the alternatives and the recommendation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Judge. There are no questions.
Great. Well, thank you all. You all have a good evening.
You too, sir.
Thanks again for the order.
Yes, sir. Judge, you do. Judge Krishna, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
It's actually not a question. It's a quick statement of appreciation for determination to continuing to find efficiencies for our court. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. I appreciate that. And I'm still looking for more ways as we go along.
Sure. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Madam Secretary.
RS 24055, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Shebe Consulting LLC for the Drainage Master Plan Project in the amount of $360,000.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Zegars.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. We're here to present the proposal for the Drainage Master Plan Project. In 2022, the capital improvement plan included work towards updating the Drainage Master Plan. Our last one was actually dated 2011, so we're needing to have some updates on this. The project will provide an update to our existing Drainage Master Plan, including flood reduction alternatives, do an analysis, looking at recommended drainage improvement projects based on that, and also work on updating our rainfall and land development, based on the land development of, as the city's grown since then. The project will also provide update to our engineering standards related to our drainage manual. That also is dated 2012, and it needs to be updated as well to kind of bring it up to speed with the current requirements. And then also, this contract will work towards applying for FEMA grants, looking for additional dollars so where we can really expand our analysis as it relates to our drainage plan, and see if we can get more of a robust type of system, update our curves, and then work towards updating our FEMA maps. The staff has evaluated several consultants and proposals that are related to this project, and we selected Shebe Consultant LLC to perform the work. The project cost is $360,000 for this initial part of the work, and then, like I said, it does include all that we've kind of said, and then also applying for grants to hopefully expand and make a kind of a bigger grandiose of that project. And our recommendation is to approve the professional service agreement with Shebe Inc. for the Drainage Master Plan Project in the amount of $360,000.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sir, what was the, why Shebe, what made them stand? Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what was the, why Shibe, what made them stand out, Shibe Inc. as your choice? And out of how many?
Okay. We requested, we interviewed several. Two of them, when we got to the point where we had proposals with half, was one consultant was half, the other was Shibe. Shibe, all he does is drainage. He, this is their specialty. This is something that they specialize in. We trust everything that they do. They actually are working with the Nolan Creek Flood, Watershed Group. They've done the analysis with Nolanville, Harker Heights, and so they're very familiar with the area, have done some modeling in the area, and again, like I said, this is their specialty.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand the proposal, much-needed drainage master plan, is going to cost us a hefty $360,000. I noted in the legislative text, it states, "This contract will cover Phase 1 of the new Drainage Master Plan." The question is, what is Phase 2 of the Drainage Master Plan, and how many phases are associated with this plan?
So we base it on really a two-phase type of approach. The first phase is to get the initial project going, getting the analysis, get some project, get the project update, list updated, and work towards the standards, but also include that FEMA grant. Phase 2 is really going to be determined if we get a grant towards this. We feel it's a very strong type of contention based on watersheds, FEMA, floodplain. There are available dollars through that. This consultant is very familiar with those grants, so we're going to apply. And if we do receive that money, then that's what Phase 2 is. It's going to expound on our initial studies, really develop the watershed, the models of all our streams and water bodies, and then also work towards updating our FEMA maps.
And is Phase 2 going to be a similar price point?
It will be based on how much money we get from FEMA on that, and what we're looking at. Most likely, it'll be more because it's a more robust type of modeling and developing a city of clean watershed model.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Zegars, what is the turnaround once, if the council approved this next Tuesday? When will they start, and how long will it take?
Typically, it'll start, we get, it takes a couple of weeks before we get a contract in place, and then we work with our consultant. They can start probably within a month. This analysis, I believe, was approximately a year's worth of analysis and working on the studies, but again, also applying for those FEMA grants. And when those open up, those requests for applications, we're going to time our consult, our contract with those as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Kegel, thank you, and all your executive directors. Having a master plan, I think the council will agree, is just laying the foundation, the footprint for those that will come behind you to follow. And I am truly excited about each executive director and the leadership of Mr. Kegel, how you are working together to just lay the foundation for the future of our city. Master plans are needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24056, consider a memorandum resolution approving an amendment to the letter of agreement with the Colleen Economic Development Corporation to provide economic development services in an amount of $865,000.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Kate.
Hello.
Good evening. How are you?
Great. How are you doing, Mayor?
Great, great.
Thank you all for having me tonight. Hopefully, a short and sweet presentation. The City of Colleen entered into agreement with the Colleen Economic Development Corporation, KEDC, in November of 1990 to provide economic development services for the city. In January of 2023, City Council approved a two-year agreement for FY '23 and '24 in the amount of $725,054 per year. In September 12, 2023, City Council approved an increase in funds. And to be able to increase that fund from our finance department to actually allocate those monies, we need to amend the agreement. FY '24 proposed budget funding was $865,000. Based on the updating funding amount and amendments to the agreements needed, there are two amendments proposed in the KEDC agreement, a quarterly reporting from KEDC to City Council on the nature of the expenditures or commitments made of funds received to be submitted to the Executive Director of Development Services 15 days in advance, and an increase in funding for FY '24 from $725,054 to $865,000. Staff is recommending that City Council authorize the City Manager or Designee to execute the agreement with KEDC to increase their FY 2024 contribution in the amount of $865,000, an increase of $140,946.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Councilmember Cigar.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that. I was a little surprised. I was looking out there to see who was going to do the presentation, and usually, it's the president of the chamber. So when you came up, it's like, okay, that's good. That's interesting. I'm hoping that because you're up here, you were working something in the downtown area?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, this funding was approved last year at the partners' presentations. It just wasn't amended in their agreement.
Okay, okay. But is there anything in here, as I know we've talked about this in the past, and I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but, you know, trying to figure out more incentives and things like that to do, you know, help, you know, revitalize our downtown? Is there anything that you know of that's, maybe some of this can be used for?
I believe, and at their presentation, when they made it, I believe, last July, there was an additional $70,000 for marketing and then additional $70,000 for technical support. So that was what this increase for their annual.
Got it. All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Kegel.
Yeah, I would just say, they usually show up with a budget request, and then it's just one of our staff members that, Mr. Rebel's out of town. Normally, he would, the contract. And while we're on this subject, KEDC did not own the teleperformance building that the school purchased.
I think we just branded Ms. Kate as downtown, so as you call it downtown, we're gonna do something there.
I'm sorry. What did you say, Mr.?
I said, KEDC did not own the teleperformance building that KSD purchased for their offices. It was, it was, as I said, it's not owned by KEDC.
Thank you. Councilmember Cigar. No, were you finished? Oh, any other council member? Well, Ms. Kate, as always, it's always a pleasure to see you and any extra revenue that can go downtown in Colleen for the revitalization, especially marketing. I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24057, consider a memorandum resolution approving a petition submitted by James Kent on behalf of Pimlock Properties LLC requesting release from the City of Colleen extraterritorial jurisdiction for approximately 5.78 acres of land out of the West Allen Survey, Abstract Number 24. The subject property is generally located on the west side of Brewer Road, approximately .31 miles north of FM 2484, Salado, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and Ms. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you. So this item is a request for release from the city's ETJ. So as you know, during the 2023 legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill 2038, which amended Chapter 42 of the Local Government Code to allow owners of property within the ETJ to petition for release from the ETJ, and this became effective on September 1st of last year. On January 11th of this year, staff received a petition for release from the ETJ from Mr. James Kent on behalf of Pimlock Properties LLC for approximately 5.78 acres. The property is fully within the City of Colleen's ETJ and is generally located on the west side of Brewer Road, north of FM 2484. So the red star on the screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the property, so you can see it's undeveloped. As you know, with the adoption of Senate Bill 2038, the Local Government Code now states that if a municipality fails to take action to release the area by the latter of 40, the 45th day after the date the municipality receives the petition, or the next meeting of the municipality's governing body that occurs after the 30th day, the petition is, the area is released by an operation of law. So based on the statute, the petition for release from the ETJ was approved by operation of law on February 25th. However, Local Government Code, Section 42023, states that the extraterritorial jurisdiction of a municipality may not be reduced unless the governing body gives its written consent by ordinance or resolution. So for that reason, a resolution approving the reduction of the ETJ must be approved. And with that, staff's recommendation is that the council approve the petition, releasing this property from the ETJ. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember, oh, thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Got it. So when this, the first one came towards it, I thought, and please correct me if there's some, a different reading, whether we approve this or not, it still goes. But then I read that, and I just read that if it's, if we don't act on it within a certain timeframe, then it's approved by operation of law. Those aren't the same thing? Or the first statement applies and this applies?
So there are two separate sections
Okay.
of the Local Government Code. One says it's approved by operation of law. The other says that the ETJ must, can only be amended by ordinance or resolution. So there's one section that says it's already approved by law, and then there's another section that requires an ordinance or resolution. Holly, correct, Ms. Clemens, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct. I don't think the new law really took into consideration that other section. The city is just trying to be thorough in complying with state law, trying to look at both of those requirements. I do not believe, based on the new statute, that we can deny or withhold or not allow them to be released from the ETJ. But then there's also requirement that there be a resolution doing so. So that's what we're here doing.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a ministerial, not a discretionary act.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
RS 24058, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Central Texas Council of Governments for a household hazardous waste event.
Good evening, Mr. Reynolds. This is your first time since you've been back briefing us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney. It's good to be back. Tonight, we are looking to, Public Works in the Solid Waste Division is looking to get an interlocal agreement with the Central Texas Council of Governments to host our annual Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Event. This event is scheduled for May 4th at the Colleen Special Event Center, and it will be hosted between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. The interlocal agreement, of course, will open up the event to other residents in the region and provide additional funding from the CitCOC to help sponsor this event. The city reimbursed the CitCOC the difference between their dedicated $20,000 for the event. This is the highest we've gotten in a while on this event. I think last year, we got $15,000 on this event, but because it was so successful, we did get $20,000 this year. And we will reimburse up to $45,000 that we have budgeted for this event. This is, as I stated before, the event will be hosted at the Special Event Center parking lot. This is at no additional charge to the residents to dispose of these items. This event will also allow, it allows residents to get rid of household hazardous, pesticides, pesticides, paints, oils, petroleum, all those type hazardous waste that's there, antifreeze, things of that nature, that they can get rid of, batteries, things that actually cause fires at the transfer station, and are hazard to our employees as they pick things up on the streets. So we ask the City Council to authorize the City Manager, or Designee to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Colleen and the Central Texas Council of Governments for a $20,000 grant to allow residents of seven counties to the opportunity to dispose of hazardous waste. And I'm here to answer any question you may have about this event.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 24059, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2423, Transfer Station Crane to Waste Systems Equipment, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $310,556.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds.
All right. The transfer station, as you know, we don't have an open landfill, so we transfer our waste from the City of Colleen to Temple Landfield. So we rely heavily on the stationary cranes, the grapple cranes, to help load the trucks that goes out. If we don't compact that material, we'll be penal, we're gonna pay the same cost to push that load out for that truck. We want to make sure we maximize the loads. That's what the cranes are used for, to compact those loads evenly distributed the waste in those trailers, so they're safe traveling down from here to the landfill. We purchased one, one of the cranes, as I stated, we have two out there. We purchased one in 2015, and we purchased one in 2019. The one that's, a person in 2015 is due for replacement. We're seeing a lot of overheating issues with this crane, and the life expectancy for these cranes is between six and eight years. We're at the, in the ninth year that crane uses, so we've met the life expectancy for that crane. It's time to replace it. On September the 12th, 2023, City Council approved the 24, FY '24 CIP plan, which had this budgeted in that, in that plan. So this is a budgeted item. On January 25th of this year, person received three bids in response to the bid for the crane. Two came from the national equipment dealers, and one from Waste Systems Equipment. Funds are allocated, as stated before, and we budgeted 436, but we actually got a really good deal for 310 on this crane that we're gonna be putting out there. Robotech Equipment, which is a subsidiary of that Waste Systems Equipment, they're gonna be the crane that we're gonna be using. They specialize in cranes for the transfer station. We got an opportunity to go out and have our staff go out and visit with the City of Corpus Cove, who installed one of these cranes last year. One of the benefits of this crane is that it allows, it has a cooling mechanism in the crane. So the cranes we have now don't have that, so this is gonna actually expand, expand the life of the crane out there. And it's been working great for Corpus Cove over the last year. We're requesting that we authorize the award of bid number 2423, Transfer Crane to Waste Systems Equipment, and authorize the City Manager or his Designee to execute a letter of agreement with Waste Systems Equipment in an amount not to exceed $310,556. I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question related to maintenance. Is there a separate package for that associated with this crane?
They will be, when we get these cranes, we normally, they have like a six-month deal where they will come out. If anything happens after that, it's pretty much on us. Our staff is pretty much equipped to deal with these. We really haven't had to go out and get major, pay for major maintenance on the cranes. Our staff out there are really well-equipped to deal with it, with the maintenance issues of the cranes out there, so we don't foresee that being an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
RS 24060, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying a sports officiating professional services agreement with Copper's Cove Athletic Officials Association in an amount of $61,700.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. No, it's always good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's item is the sports officiating services with the Copper's Cove Athletic Officials. The Parks and Recreation Department entered into a professional services agreement with Copper's Cove Athletic Officials Association on December 12, 2023 for $48,499. An increase in participation in the program has created an additional need for officials, which resulted in the cost going over the $50,000 threshold and requiring an amendment to the contract. Each participant generates an average gross revenue of $50. The services are continuing to be rendered for programs ongoing as we have not yet exceeded the contract amount. The total annual estimated cost and budgeted expenditures for these additional services are not to exceed $61,700 for FY ' '24. Both parties have acknowledged that this expenditure exceeds the $50,000 threshold and will need to be approved by City Council. Staff recommends that City Council approve the professional services agreement amendment with Copper's Cove Athletic Officials Association in an amount not to exceed $61,700 for FY '24 to continue to provide officiating services for the City of Colleen youth and athletic adult programs, youth and adult athletic programs.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Snook? Ms. Snook, that is a great problem to have. That means that more teams, more people are getting out, forming teams and playing.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're utilizing our parks and our resources. That's a good problem.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
No, thank you, your team, for all you do.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24061, consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Senior Citizen Advisory Board and appointing a new member.
Yes, this, this item is for the. Yes, this, this item is for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board removal. The City of Colleen has various citizen boards, commissions, and committees that serve in an advisory capacity. Appointed members are expected to attend the group's meetings regularly. Section 2-118 of the Code of Ordinances Declaration of Positioned Vacancy Due to Excessive Absences outlines the procedure for removal of a member. In February 2024, the Senior Citizen Advisory Board Chairperson sent a letter to the City Manager's Office notifying staff that one of the commissioners had missed three consecutive commissions meeting in a 12-month period and requested City Council declare the position vacant and assign a replacement for the position. The current member is Ms. Rosalyn Stubbs. She is an at-large member, and she is not termed. Recommendation is that City Council declare a vacancy and appoint an individual to fill the vacancy on the Senior Citizen Advisory Board.
Thank you, Council. The two councilmembers that represent the Senior Advisory Board is Councilmember Solomon and Mayor Pro-Town Cobb. Do y'all have a recommendation? Mayor Pro-Town, Councilmember Solomon?
I don't have a recommendation.
Okay. All right, so we can, um, we can, by next Tuesday, you can bring one. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Snook.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24062, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the Crime Solutions Committee.
Thank you, Attorney Clemens.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. This is the item for appointments to the Crime Solutions Committee. The Mayor and City Council make annual appointments to various boards, committees throughout the year as vacancies occur. The Crime Solutions Committee was established in March of 2021 with 13 places for membership. On February, in February of this year, Council approved a new membership structure with 12 members and one ad hoc member. You can see these here. The appointments, the appointments here, this, this table shows current members, and it shows current members of the Crime Solutions Committee listed under the positions for which they're eligible under the restructured membership. Requesting, we're requesting the Council confirm the current appointments to these positions, as not all of them came to Council initially, and nominate for appointment next week new members to the following positions. Each, a representative from each of the districts, a Fort Cavazos representative, and I believe Councilmember Adams has been discussing that, but we don't have that name confirmed yet for the Fort Cavazos representative, and then one Colleen business representative. When you, you have the applicant packets, this is a full council appointment, so you have all of the packets, and the packets are, you can see that they're broken down into districts, so you have the applicants by district, and then you also received an email from staff regarding there are seven applicants that are eligible for the business representative. And then the YAC representative, in the future, the YAC will meet and make a recommendation, but at this time, we do not have an aim for that. So the recommendation is that you confirm current members as listed and appoint new members to the Crime Solutions Committee. If you have those names, we can go ahead and put that into the presentation for next week. If you don't, you need the week, you can, we can wait.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, excuse me. I'm gonna make a nomination for Representative for District Four for the Crime Solutions Committee. That nominee is gonna be Juanita Harris, who has relevant experience as a KISD campus officer, according to application here, and is a resident of District Four, and has a willingness to serve and does not currently serve on any other city board or commission.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My recommendation is Kelly Dorn. Kelly Dorn has the qualifications and experience regarding crime analysis reporting, as well as studies in crime analysis and criminal behavior, has not served on any other, is not currently serving on any other boards at this time.
For the District One.
For District One, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Captain Mayor Pro-Town, District Three.
David Davis, I would like to nominate David Davis for Crimes Commission.
Councilmember Solomon, District Two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recommend Ricky Jones.
Ricky?
Ricky Jones. Ricky Jones? He's, uh, he's not serving on any board, no? So I'll recommend him?
Yes, sir.
Ricky Jones?
Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Subar, Councilmember, you know, Councilmember Adams, she was the president. Do y'all have, well, they already got it at large. Wow. Okay, well, we have Fort Cavazos, and we have Colleen Business Rep. Do anyone have any recommendations? Sorry about that. Councilmember Adams.
I know it large.
Business Representative, I would nominate Jeremy Fay. Jeremy Fay.
What? You have anybody at Fort Cavazos, anyone?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
I, um, went in discussion with the Direct Emergency Services, and so they were giving me a name. I would recommend that we, really, have somebody from the military police community.
Thank you. And Ms. Snook, well, if y'all don't mind, she can give a name for our YAC representative, 'cause she knows their schedules, unless y'all have someone already in mind. Okay, so that's okay. All right. So Ms. Snook gonna give us a recommendation for that position.
Okay.
It'll be neutral, so she know him better than us when it comes to their schedule, their schedule. All right, anything else, Council?
All right, great, quick and fast. Thank you, great job. All right, Madam Secretary.
RS 24063, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the Bell County Board of Health.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we are bringing to you, or we are needing recommendations for representatives to serve on the Public Health District. City of Colleen is a full member of the Bell County Public Health District. We have an appointment of one member representative and an alternate, an alternate representative to serve three-year terms to the Bell County Board of Health. Councilmembers Gonzalez and Adams are subcommittee members for the Health District. Our recommendation is for the subcommittee to appoint two individuals to fill the representative and alternate positions with City Council approval. Dr. Sam Fiala, he is, is filling the term, but it's expired, and he's expressed interest in being reappointed. We also have the name of Dr. Amy Mersekovsky as an alternate for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Town.
I would like to let you all know that these two persons who have been nominated have sent in paperwork, they agreed, they talked to me, they called me, they really wanna do this. So, and the reason for the alternative is because Dr. Fala may have to go for a study, and during that time, the other doctor will step in place, and they're really, they're really good, and they can regulate and work with our health department. You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Without being strong on about a Mayor Pro-Town, I would nominate, I always nominate the two names mentioned, I can't pronounce, Makowski?
Yes, Dr. Samuel Fiala and Dr. Amy Mersekovsky.
Yes, to renew Dr. Fiala's term and appoint Dr. Ems' appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I concur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance. Madam Secretary.
OR 24002, consider an ordinance to amend the number of authorized civil service positions for the Colleen Police Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr., I mean, Chief Lopez. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. The item before you.
You should guys. Sorry.
The item before you is the reclassification of positions in the police department. Let's begin with a little background. The civil service system was established on August 13th, 1977. City Council by ordinance should prescribe the number of authorizations in each classification. Currently authorized staffing level is 222 police officers, 26 police sergeants, 10 police lieutenants, four police captains, to assistant chief of police. While considering this request, I understand that it's difficult to rationalize reducing the number of police officers on the street, but I want to offer you some historical data, which will help you in understanding the reason for this request. During the last 10 years, KPD has held an average of 25 police officer vacancies per year. We have been, never been able to fully staff the police department. The closest we came to being fully staffed was in 2017, when we had 10 vacancies. We have been working hard to, to fill our current vacancies. We currently have 11 officers in the FTO program, 14 cadets in the academy, and 18 future cadets, which is slated to start the next police academy, which is on April 22nd of this year, pending that they all pass the polygraph exam this week. If we are able to fill all the positions, we will have six vacancies. This request does not significantly impact patrol staffing. The benefits of staffing the Real-Time Crime Center with supervisors will correct the staffing realignment. I will now explain the benefits of this request. The Real-Time Crime Center was approved by Council on December 12th, 2023. With this program, there will be a need for more hands-on leadership and technical expertise, and sergeants are better equipped to fulfill those roles. To manage and staff the program, the Colleen Police Department is requesting to reduce the number of police officer positions by four and increase sergeant's positions by four, which will not impact the total number of authorized police positions. There are two primary reasons for this request. As a department, we have to adapt to changing needs. By converting officer, officer positions to sergeant positions, it will reflect our strategic response to evolving operational needs, staffing requirements, and community demographics. This request is part of our strategic realignment to reclassify officer positions to sergeant positions as part of our plan to reallocate resources to areas that are deemed to be higher priority or more critical to organization's missions and objectives in enhancing our technological capabilities. The benefits to this program are, we can prioritize calls by having officers respond to higher priority calls before responding to lower priority calls. The sergeants and personnel assigned to the Real-Time Crime Center will be able to actively monitor the call volume and dispatch officers to higher priority calls. They themselves will be able to handle low priority calls and determine if an actual police officer needs to be dispatched to the scene, or can it be handled via the phone. We will enable patrol officers to receive actionable intelligence while en route to the scene by integrating data from various points, such as surveillance cameras and information obtained for the caller. Real-time crime centers can enhance situational awareness and enable faster, more informed decision-making. It also allows for real-time information sharing between detectives and patrol. By collecting and analyzing that on low-priority crimes, we can identify emerging trends, motor apparandi, and criminal networks, thereby enhancing overall investigative capabilities and crime-solving rates. It will assist in crime prevention and reduction. The department can share real-time information and engage with the public through social media and other channels. Real-time crime centers can empower citizens to play a more active role in crime prevention and reporting. The sergeants will be able to monitor police radio, data, and any communication systems to determine if ongoing incidents could benefit from any services provided by the Real-Time Crime Center. Upon notification of a major crime or incident that is in progress, sergeants can begin appropriate investigative steps. Sergeants will coordinate the appropriate response to any active crime incident. They will assign each real-time crime members, um, member, specific cameras to be monitored during their shift, and they will provide overall supervision and guidance to the Real-Time Crime Center personnel. Our recommendation is to approve to reclassify four police officer positions to four sergeant positions with a financial impact of $156,174 to operate the Real-Time Crime Center effectively. We open any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Chief Lopez, I do have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see Council chiming in. Uh, I just wanna make sure I understood you correctly. You said there were six police vacancies.
Pending if they all pass the polygraph exam this week.
Then there'll be six.
Yes, ma'am.
And then out of the six that if they pass, you'll have six openings.
If the 18 that's currently in the testing phase, the polygraph exam phase, if they pass this week, they go on to the police academy, then we'll have six vacancies in the department.
And so the four positions that you wanna send to the Real-Time Crime Center, those are four sergeants that would not be doing patrol anymore?
Not actually. They'll be, they'll be in the patrol division, but they'll be manned at the Real-Time Crime Center, and they'll be able to see the whole picture of the whole city. So they will handle, in actuality, more calls than officer will, 'cause they have the capabilities to say, for example, if they have to decide with dispatching an officer to a shooting in progress, and then you have a call for a barking dog, two, three calls for barking dogs, or some lower priority incident, they will be able to handle those incidents themselves at the Real-Time Crime Center and save the officers for the response to the shooting incident.
Right, I understood that part. So my question, I just wanted some clarity.
Okay.
My question is, how would that work with their promotion? Is it still like they'll stay there, I understand their job, so two or three years they'll take, uh, take the test to, for lieutenant, correct?
No, yes, ma'am. Well, these sergeants right now, we currently have an active promotional list for sergeants.
Okay.
So these sergeants, these officers are gonna be taken from that list that we have.
Now that makes sense, okay. 'Cause if they're sergeants, I'm like, when it's time to get promoted, move on, who's gonna feel? But you're right, you do have.
We have an active list right now.
As well as lieutenants.
Yeah, not, not lieutenants yet.
But commanders yet?
Not yet.
And just sergeants? Okay, that's smart. Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you, Chief. There is no questions.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary. Councilmember requests for future agenda item. Just to let everyone know, this is not a discussion item. Councilmember Solomon, you will state, make your statement, and it'll be voted up or down if it will be a future agenda item. Questions can be asked for clarity. Madam Secretary.
RQ 24004, discuss Proposition A, Marijuana Ordinance Lawsuits.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am, um, requesting this to be placed on the agenda because it's necessary, because of the seriousness of these two lawsuits that we have as it concerns Proposition A, one with Bell County and one with the state of Texas, as we already know this. But I believe that the public needs to know, we have already discussed this, but the public needs to know, we need to, as a council, to openly discuss this and give some type of direction publicly, other than a press release. We don't need, we have, already have the press release, but I believe that it needs to be discussed among the council publicly. They need to know clearly and publicly what direction the council is going to take. It provides transparency. It, it lets the know, it lets the taxpayer know what we're gonna be doing, whether or not we're gonna go with this. But they need to know as taxpayers, because we are paying for this, the taxpayers are paying for this. So I'm asking that if we could, in some form of direction, or a motion of direction, or whether we vote on this, but I'm asking that we would place this on the council, on the next agenda, the City Council agenda, to give a, a publicly direction, council, what we, where we going. And I, I know that it's been out there, but, and to, in terms of the newspaper, but everybody don't know it. Everybody don't know it. They need to understand why we're doing this, what direction that we're, whether we do it or not, I'm just, I'm just saying the public needs to know where we stand at. So that's why I'm asking. So that's why I'm asking for this to be discussed. My fellow council members?
Yes, sir. There is no discussion now, they can only vote to put it as a future agenda item, and then they can discuss it if it's, if it moves forward. But they can ask questions for clarification. With that being said, motion of direction or not? Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question of clarity for the city attorney, if you will. Considering the existing lawsuits, if you will, would the council open ourselves up to, or open the city, rather, to potential liability and have a public discussion on this in a future agenda discussion?
I would say the same thing as in any lawsuit, regardless of the topic. My recommendation would never to be discussed publicly and openly, in open session about a pending lawsuit, regardless of the topic. That has always been my advice. I don't think it's a good idea because legal, yeah, I mean, for, for various reasons, but legal strategy, things that are said definitely could be used against us in the, in the legal case that is pending. This is different than just, okay, we have an ordinance to discuss, we actually have been sued, and we are impending litigation.
Thank you for that, that professional recommendation. Transparency is, is very important. I do believe that we need to weigh in the, the council that we received from our city attorney in moving forward with this potentially. That's all I got.
Councilmember Gonzalez, is this a question for clarity?
It is, yes, ma'am. Are you requesting specifically a discussion versus a briefing, maybe, with an update as to where we are in the process? Are you looking for a full-on discussion? Because I would have to agree with the city attorney at that point regarding our, our litigation proceedings.
I'm not asking for a detailed discussion. I'm asking for, for the council to give a publicly direction of which way we're going. We've already said it in the press. We did a press release. The public already know that. So I'm saying it could be a discussion, but, or a vote, of which way we would go with this. I'm not asking to go into detail, but I think the public deserves to know which clearly, clearly know where we're going with this, because they're going to foot, put the bill.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No.
For clarification? Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor. And clarification and the recommendation from our city attorney was to, you know, be careful not to say anything, and as we were behind closed doors talking to the attorney, that is the advice that was given to us back there, and that's kind of, I'll be the first one to say, I'm, I'm in favor of transparency and informing, but also, I'm not an attorney. And that is the reason why, you know, I feel that we got to listen to our attorney. Why, why pay money if you got an attorney? And if they said, don't do it, then, and it's obvious, you know, if, if we still have an attorney, then what direction we're going, because he's still working our case. So I don't know what explanation we would need. I mean, I'll be glad to talk. If you let me, I'll be glad to have that conversation with anybody, but I understand and I respect the attorneys, our city attorney's advice and the attorney that we hired, and that's why we're like that. It's not that we're trying to hide anything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I wanted to bring this up, and I, I, I know we are, we in litigation, but I wasn't talking about discussion, what we've had in executive session, I was talking about more or less, because the public wants to know which way we're going. And we've already said it in the, in the newspaper, but I would just say we needed to say it and have an open discussion with it, and say, hey, you know, we want to go this way, and, or we want to go that way, and why we want to go that way. I don't think that will hurt if we've already said it. If you could help me out that, help me with that, Ms. Hawley?
Sure, and, and my response, I guess, was more, I, I don't know where the open discussion is, is going. I don't know what the parameters of that, if all your, if, if what you're wanting, the city was asked by news stations, did we answer the lawsuit? And the answer was, the city did file an answer to the lawsuit and filed a motion to abate the lawsuit, because there's, the same lawsuit is being litigated with the county, with the state of Texas as a party of that as well. And so that is on appeal in third court, and so we filed a motion to abate the, the second case filed by the state. And so that was the answer that was given, and if that's the answer you want to publicly, we did provide that to.
That we're moving forward with.
We continue to defend the case. We're, we're defendant in the lawsuit.
Okay, well, okay. Okay, well, the public needs to know that, and I think they needed to know it in a, in a, in a council setting, and not disclose all of the ramifications and discussions. I'm not trying to do that, but I'm just saying that we needed to say that, if that's all we need to say. But I, I do think that we could have brought it to a vote, but I understand, and I'm not a lawyer neither, Councilman Segarra, but I do think that there are some things, for the sake of the public, they want to know, how are we going to go about this? Because our names are on that, our name is on that suit, lawsuit, that's public. You know, everybody's name is on that. I don't want my name on that. And so I know I'm verbal about this, but I'm, you know, I'm passionate about it because I believe that, for where we going at with this, and I have a concern about it. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. So did that, did that answer your question? Are we still going to vote on it, or you can withdraw it, or we can move on? Can we, do we have to vote on it? Because it's on there, or did that answer your question? You wanted her to say what she said, and that's it? So do we have to vote on? I'm trying to see, did that satisfy you, what she said, or do you want them to vote on it to discuss what was our decision?
I would like to know if we could.
See, I think what he's trying to ask is, and correct me, because y'all saying two different things from what I'm getting. You're trying to see, tell the public what we, how we moving forward with this.
Right.
And she gave a statement to the public that it's the Bell County and the state is suing us both, so we trying to bring it together. So my question to you, did she answer your question that you wanted the public to know?
She did. She did answer the question. She answered the question that we are, we are in litigations and we're moving forward with the litigations, right?
We're, we're defendant in the lawsuit, so there is no, as the defendant, there's no unilateral way to have a case dismissed against you. So yes, we continue to defend the city in the lawsuit.
Okay, so we're saying that we're defending that, and we are not, so that means that we're not going to do anything else but defend that? I mean, in terms of repeal?
Repeal. Certainly, if the council wanted to repeal the ordinance, that vote would be taken in public. That would not be in closed session if there was, if, if, if that's what you're wanting to put on a future agenda to vote on repealing the ordinance, that would, that would be in open session.
Well, certainly, I would like to have that, but I know that's not going to happen. But yeah, I think that would be, at least a vote on that, so the public would know who stands for what. So with that said, Madam Mayor, yeah, that's, that's what I would like to do if we could.
Okay. So it's, I'm sorry, I took my glasses off. So the RQ dash 24 dash 004, is there a motion of direction to 004 to put the, discuss the Proposition A marijuana ordinance lawsuit? And, uh, Mr. Councilmember Segarra, I mean, Solomon, I'm really trying to wrap my head around this. Only thing that you, on this you want to discuss is how we voted?
Well, I would like to.
Yes, Ms.?
May I help?
Yes, please.
I think what Councilmember Solomon wants is an up or down vote on the ordinance. I believe that's what he's asking for, and I.
Yes. If that summed it up.
Okay, so that's the repeat. Okay, so you heard it, up or down. So do we want to make this a future agenda item? Is there a, Councilmember Segarra? Is it a motion of direction?
All he wants is a vote up or down.
Yes.
And we can do that right now, can't we? Why are we voting to put it on a future?
I'm sorry, hold, stand back. That's not what, uh, city attorney, I'm sorry.
To, on an ordinance, to repeal the ordinance. So that would have to be on a future agenda item, and there would be a vote to repeal the ordinance and, and, yeah.
Well, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a, a motion of direction to repeal the ordinance?
Did he make a motion of direction? He put it on the agenda, he wants to make a motion of, of direction. It has to be a, we talking about future agenda item. He cannot make a motion of direction to appeal the, the ordinance.
No, the motion of direction, as, as I'm understanding it, would be to put it on a future agenda item to vote on repealing the ordinance.
Yes.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, so is that, yeah, can he make his, since he put it on the agenda, can he make his?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, so I make that a motion of direction? What, what is the language I need to say?
So if I understood you correctly, the motion of direction he wants is to put it on the, a future agenda to appeal the ordinance? Is that what?
To repeal the ordinance, yes. So if, if this passes, then we would put, on a future agenda item, we would put an ordinance, repealing the ordinance, and the council would vote to repeal it or not.
Yes, ma'am. All right, do we have a motion of direction from Councilmember Solomon? Do we have a second to the motion of direction? Do we have a so, a second to the motion of direction to put it on a future agenda item to repeal the Proposition A marijuana ordinance? Uh, the motion of direction does, sorry about that.
That's good.
All right, you want it to be on record, and you're on record.
Thank you, Madam.
No, sir, thank you. All right, Madam Secretary.
DS 24022, City Manager Review.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act Law Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a close meeting of the City Council on the 19th day of March 2024 at 8:29 PM. Under the following authority, Section 551.074, personnel matters, the City Council will conduct a city manager quarterly review. Public discussion of this matter will not be in the best interest of the city. Agenda item DS dash 24 dash 022, the subject matter of the close meeting deliberation. The council will now go to close section. Let me, I know, I know. The council is now out of closed session. Councilmember Adams, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I'm moved we adjourn?
Councilmember Boyd, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mean adjourn. Good job, counsel.